We'll go and get the meeting started this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ross. Okay, welcome to the meeting this evening of Monday, August 11th, 2025. Welcome to everybody that is here in attendance and/or on YouTube. We appreciate you being here and paying attention. First, we'll go ahead and start with roll call.
Benson?
Here.
Birch?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Sarda?
Here.
Conkling?
Here.
Hanoff?
Here.
Moser?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Mayor Villanueva?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
I'm here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Item number two, under routine business, we're going to go ahead and approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 28th, 2025. Commission, what is your pleasure on that?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion about the approval of the minutes? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Before you, you have a schedule of bills. Commission, what is your pleasure?
Moved to pay the bills.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, bills will be paid. Next, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. Found out that tomorrow is a statewide City Hall selfie day, so if you're in the neighborhood of City Hall, if you would take a selfie, either text it to me or email it to me, I'll get it to Community Development who will help us put it on Facebook and help us communicate that with the Municipal League. We've arranged the mayor to take a selfie, so I guess that's a new thing the Municipal League has done for a couple of years now, so we'll be taking some selfies as well. Want to remind folks that also next Tuesday, after we all recover from Riverboat Days this weekend, Mayor and I will be traveling to the First Class Mayors Meeting in Oakoma at Cedar Shore, so we'll be talking with the other First Class Mayors probably about upcoming legislation, I'm presuming. Also, talking about some of our budgetary concerns, which are not just Yankton concerns, they're local government concerns in general, so I'm guessing we'll be talking about those things as well. So if there's anything you'd like us to communicate there, we're happy to pass it along. With school starting next week, since we won't meet before then, just a reminder to the public to keep an eye on your speed, make sure you're watching and being very careful in and around school zones and everywhere. I've already seen, I know summer's coming to an end when I see the football players on the practice field east of the middle school, and that began, I think, this evening. So just keep an eye out for that. Our police department will be helping and assisting in the first couple of weeks, getting people used to flows. Also, we have a new school opening, so people may not be used to maybe slowing traffic in that area of town, but we're working with the school on that. Next week, on Monday, budget meeting, 6:00 PM, right here, there is not a packet. The packet is the budget, so that's available to the public and to you now. We'll be presenting the budget and taking questions, comments, and feedback on the 2026 budget. I believe Jean sent you some information on the South Dakota Municipal League Conference and Pier taking place Wednesday, October 1st through 3rd. If there's commissioners interested in that, please communicate with Jean and we will work on seeing about getting you registered, as well as if any travel arrangements need to be made. Want to tell the public and tell you that the pickleball courts, the center courts at Westside Park, will be painted into regular courts. You remember there was a crack there. The treatment that our contractor utilized, we wanted to observe for a few weeks. We did observe that. Seems like it's working, so Todd has indicated to him we'd like to get those courts painted as soon as possible. He's going to give us a timeline for that. If he can't get that completed, then we'll look for a vendor who can get that completed, so we can have all of the courts as planned, ready to play. And I believe that they're already getting, the courts that are available are getting used a lot, so that's been a nice addition to the community. Other than to remind everyone to get to Riverboat Days and enjoy that, Mayor, I don't have anything further. I'm happy to answer questions if the commission or public has them.
Commission, do you have any questions for the city manager? Okay, I do have a quick question in regards to the, to the courts. I know one of the things I did have a chance to look at that myself, and there was, there was movement in that, in that joint. Will there be a, a different type of, what do we call it, control joint there? Something that they're going to be able to?
It appears that Mr. Lindsay, our contractor, has put something, I don't know what kind of material in that joint, and it seems not, it seems to be working with the heat and cool, expanding and contracting with it and not creating that lip, so that appears to be working. We do have a Plan B if later on in the season or when we get more extreme temperatures that we can bring to you, but we think it's worth moving ahead with the painting and think that's going to work out for the players. And I know they'll let us know if it doesn't.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and move on then. Next will be the public appearances. This is the time for anyone in the public to address the city commission for an item that is not on the agenda. You would be able to come up to the mic and speak, and you have three minutes, so would anyone in the public like to come up and speak? Okay, I'm seeing no movement. We will move on next to our consent items. Right now, we have no consent items to, to look at. Next will be old business. So right now, item number one under old business, the 2026, 20 through 2030 Strategic Plan. This will be the consideration of a memorandum number 25-144, recommending that the city commission approve the 2026 through 2030 Strategic Plan and support staff and its implementation and execution. Before I take a motion, who, who is going to go over that for us?
That's probably me, Mayor. The same information that we talked about at our last commission meeting, I just wanted to give you and the public some time to digest it. Had gotten some questions, given some of the budgetary things that we'll be talking about next week. You know, is this still a, is this still our plan, knowing that maybe some of the things can't occur on the same timeline? And I think it is, so my answer to that is, yeah, it's still the same plan, and we can follow this plan. We may need to prioritize a little bit more individually as we move through the capital items in this plan. We also may need to just be in the planning and innovation stage of things, and so perhaps this plan might be extended into future years. We'll see. But there are definitely things that we've already started activating here and can continue to do so. So the timeline might look a little different, but I'm optimistic that we certainly, this is the, these are the right things based on your communication, communication from the department heads as well, and as we go through different budget cycles, we'll work our best to be able to fund those things and find ways we can work together, because this would then initiate the change in our mission statement to actualize our plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commission, having that explanation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more commission discussion? Anyone from the public? Okay, roll call.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next, we'll go ahead and move on to new business. Item number one under new business is going to be the annual supply of bulk de-icing salt for 2025 and 2026. Consideration of memorandum number 25-141, recommending that the city commission award the 2025 through 26 winter season supply of bulk de-icing salt, contract to Black Strap Inc. in Neely, Nebraska, in the amount of $65.89 per ton. Commission, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commission, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Anyone in the public? Okay, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Item number two under new business, the special events alcoholic beverage license. Consideration of memorandum number 25-142, recommending that the city commission approve a special on-sale liquor license for one day, October 25th, 2025, through the Center, 900 Whiting Drive, Yankton, South Dakota. The event will take place at the Yankton Center, 900 Whiting Drive, Yankton, South Dakota. Commission, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commission discussion? Seeing no mics come on, anyone in the public? Okay, roll call.
Birch?
I have a conflict as I serve on that board.
So you'd be abstaining? Okay.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, item number three under new business, Riverboat Days fireworks display. Consideration of memorandum number 25-143, recommending that the city commission approve the request for a public fireworks display hosted by the Riverboat Days and Summer Arts Committee on Oct-, excuse me, August 15th, 2025. This is a backup plan in case the south bank of the river is unusable due to weather issues and the Meridian Bridge, the top deck would then be utilized. Okay, Commission, what is your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? And all, all I would say is again that this is a backup plan, so people know that. Anyone from the public? Oh, sorry.
No, I know what I was, no. I was just going to say we've had weather issues this year.
Yeah, I know, right? Let's hope we don't have any. Okay, so any, any more commission discussion? Do you get anyone from the public? Roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, item number four under new business, the peddler's license. Consideration of memorandum number 25-145, recommending that the city commission deny the peddler's license application for Fox pest control based on questionable sales practices and having an unlicensed employee engaging in peddler's activities. What's your pleasure, Commission?
Moved to approve to deny it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commission discussion? Okay, seeing none, anyone from the public? Okay, I see no movement out there. Roll call.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion to deny passes, and I will add, the only thing I would like to add to that is that we did, in case there's questions, we did have a formal complaint about this company, and so that was the reason for the motion.
Mayor, can I ask a question too?
Yes.
So now this has been denied, which I think is valid due to reasons of the nefarious practices, I guess, that they've done. What happens if for some reason, some, they would still appear in town? Is there a process? Is it calling the police department? Is it calling City Hall? I'm just curious, because they're going to be told no, but I-
They should call dispatch, and dispatch will be, you know, able to then send an officer to find the folks and locate them. They can call City Hall too, but what we would do is connect them with dispatch because of the formal complaint, and they would be operating without a license, which is technically a crime, so we'd have the police department handle that.
Good question. Okay, moving on next to item number five, the election date discussion, public and commission input. Consideration of memorandum number 25-146, recommending that the city commission discuss and direct staff on preference for future June or November election date. An amendment to the Chapter Two Administration Ordinance would follow at the next then to commission meetings, and I think we need some explanation on this one, please.
Yeah, this is kind of Lisa and I, so as you know, the, the bill that was passed no longer allows us to have our municipal election in April. And we've tried to do a little bit of research. It sounds like cities are all kind of in the same spot we are right now, trying to decide which is better to do. We have visited with the school regarding elections. Now, you can still combine your election with the school if you so choose. That makes sense if we both end up doing the same month. The short-term ramifications for this is all of your terms and all of the terms of the boards, committees, et cetera, will be longer. How much longer will be dependent upon what you, you know, what you, what you determine to do here and, and what the public, how the public responds to you. We thought we should have this on a agenda, which is conversation, before we took a recommendation. As a staff, it really doesn't matter to us. We're good government employees. We don't like anything to change, ever. We don't do anything new, ever. So we're upset about this, period. But we'll, we'll manage. One thing we can't be, we, we can't pretend we have expertise on, and only you can know this and something to think about, is campaigning. The, the ramifications or the implications of campaigning in such a large pool of people, you know, one of my concerns, regardless of June or November, is does our local race get swung into a political party race? Because one great thing about our former government is you represent all of Yankton. All of you represent all the entire corporate limits and people of every party and people of no party and people who just like to party. You're representing them all. So that will be, I think, to the detriment of either choice that we have. Also, I don't know what it costs to run a campaign. I don't know if that cost increases when there's a lot of things on the ballot. Lisa was good enough to include a ballot. You know, there's can be some things like ballot fatigue, where you, you get to what's at the end of the ballot, which I would presume the local races would end up at the end of the ballot, and, and maybe there's some ballot fatigue. Don't know. If it's, if it costs people more to run, will they run? I don't know. You, you guys know that, but we'll make adjustments regardless of which date you choose. And I have honestly heard both. I've heard we may get a larger pool of folks voting in November because it's a general, and I've also heard Yankton's used to a spring election moving it. We've done it once in the spring, so we know we can pull it off. That year of COVID, we did do June, but, but we're happy to be flexible, and we'll partner with the school if it makes sense. The calendars will change, however, and Lisa provided that for you as well. Also, the length of time for campaigns changes, so you know that as candidates, what, what that means and what it doesn't mean. We don't, so. Happy to answer questions, and I am sure Lisa would walk through her memo if you want, but it's just one of those things, we got to pick one. And, and it will be an ordinance change, so we'll bring this forward. We have a couple of other tweaks we'd like to make in the same ordinance. It's Chapter Two, the code we just updated, but we, we would be changing the date by ordinance, so it would come before you in the next two meetings, introduction, a first reading, and then 20 days after publication would be effective.
Lisa, if you don't mind, I would ask you to walk through your memo. I just want to make sure people in the public are aware of exactly what changes. I mean, this is a big deal. It's going to affect who, who is elected to represent them, so if you wouldn't mind walking through that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, no problem, Mayor. House Bill 1130 essentially affects, as City Manager Leon said, when we can have an election. Prior, it was always the second Tuesday in April. Now we have to join with the primary in, in June or the general November election date. So if we do the June election date, that's going to be 2026 tentative. Election Day is going to be June 2nd. Petition circulation begins as early as February 2nd, so that does quite extensively extend the petition period. Petitions would be due 70 days before election date, which would be March 24th. And then after the June 2nd election day canvas would essentially be held within the seven days, so we have just the city, the next city commission meeting of June 8th. And then after that, we have our selection of mayor, swearing in the commissioners, and the appointments. So that, those are tentative at this time. If there was a November date, that would be a November 3rd, 2026 election date. Petition circulation would begin July 3rd. Petitions would be due by August 25th. So another thing to note too, is our absentee voting period was also extend. Per state statute, cities only had to do absentee voting 14 days prior to the election day. Now, by joining with the county, that would extend to 45 days, I believe, or more if the county so chooses. So that's another big change. Absentee voting, combining with the county, will be at the county government center. In the past, citizens are used to absentee voting at City Hall. So that's going to be a change on odd years when there is no county election. Then the city is responsible to run the election, and therefore will have absentee voting at City Hall. So there is going to be a big difference between odd and even year elections. Expenses, how much will we save? Who knows? That is a big question. Well, are we going to have to pay election workers? We're always going to have to pay for notices, for the election poll books. A big factor is, is the number of ballots. So in talking with County Auditor Patty Heim, she believes that there would be less ballots in November, but that is difficult to say. You know, there's a lot of factors that impact what's on the ballot from a June versus a November election. Partnerships, the school district has mentioned doing a June election. The county has recommended a November election, so I think that's kind of why we're here, looking for guidance. So as City Manager Leon mentioned, we can make either date work. Other options to consider is new commissioner onboarding. Does a new commissioner want to join in budget chaos in the summer, as you want to call it? Or we also have towards the end of the year, November onboarding options. So again, that's something to think of. Staff is accommodating to either options. There's also other options such as signs. When do you want to see signs put around our city? Voter turnout, I think, was a big impact of House Bill 1130. I think that's kind of part of the reason for the bill, is they wanted to see more people voting. So that's, historically, November has a higher voter turnout. Another big factor is weather, so there's always going to be weather that plays a big factor into either elections. And then you'll see a copy of House Bill 1130 provided that shows a lot of the other details. The South Dakota Secretary of State has not come out with a tentative calendar that municipalities are used to following, but I have talked with them directly, and they've ensured that training will come later this fall. I also included a sample copy of June 2024 primary ballot and November 5th, 2024, general election ballot. So just kind of gives an idea of the different ballot styles. So again, I think it depends what the commissioners see. There's pros and cons to both dates. Unfortunately, the city of Yankton's hands are tied, and we have to move forward. And to so the commission is aware, we received just very little guidance from the league. They encourage leaders to start having conversations with their county auditors as early as possible, which we've done. If your city usually finalizes its election date early in the calendar year, consider holding off until after those discussions occur. It says we should complete our official election canvas in accordance with SDCL 913, and, and I believe that's in your calendar, so we'll be able to handle the canvas in our regular meeting. And that it's essential to work closely with your city attorney to review the ordinances locally, and we've done that. So we've complied now with the guidance that they've given us. It's just, I, I think a lot of communities and talking with other city managers in the state are waiting to see what other cities do, so. But I think you just have to make a decision or, or get, listen to folks and get, give us time then to put the ordinance together as to what you think is best for Yankton, because it really, to me, isn't a political decision about what's better. It's a, it's what's best for Yankton as a whole, which is who you are all elected to represent.
Okay, and just a reminder, this is our discussion, so there will be no action tonight on this. Commissioners, do you have discuss, oh, okay, I see two mics on. Who wants to go first?
Mr. Mayor, I did crunch some numbers in recent, from our recent city and county elections, and I wanted to share those and maybe offer some context. For as long as I can remember, our city school elections in Yankton have suffered from poor voter turnout. And I think it's ranged between 10 and 20% each year. In our last three city elections, we averaged 1,558 voters. In a town with 10,475 registered voters, those are not very good numbers. I think this is an opportunity to improve on that. You know, every year after the votes are counted, the city officials and the media and citizens in general, they lament our poor turnout, our poor election participation. And so if we're serious about wanting to draw the most possible voters, this is a chance to prove it, and it shouldn't be a hard decision, because when it comes to voter participation, there is no comparison between June and November. Last year, the June primary in Yankton County drew 2,756 voters. The November general election drew 11,046 voters, so that's more than four times as many voted in November as in June. Now, those were countywide totals, but the city of Yankton represents 64% of the county vote. So if you multiply that 64% by those 11,046, we would have had 7,070 city voters, which is four and a half times more than our 1,558 average. And by the same measure, 64% of the June turnout would be 1763, which is not that much better than our three-year average. And I don't know, when is the last time we saw 7,000 people cast a vote in a city election? It's, it's probably never happened in this city. I think that kind of a jump, though, would be a, a big win for democracy in our community. The memo lists 12 factors to consider in the decision before us, but I don't believe all factors are created equal. In fact, I think all of the others pale in comparison to number 10, which states November has higher voter turnout. In fact, November has much higher voter turnout. The general election also provides a more balanced representation of voters than a primary does. In a primary, one party tends to dominate the turnout. A June vote would effectively skew our nonpartisan city election in favor of the party with the most compelling primary race. So if you favor a more balanced voter blend of Republicans, Democrats, and independents, November is the way to go. The primary intent of House Bill 1130 was to generate more participation in city and school elections. If we agree that is the main goal here, there's only one good choice before us. This is our chance to get more Yankton voters casting ballots in our city election than ever have before. I think November is clearly the better option. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hanoff. Commissioner Conkling, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just want to, I agree with Commissioner Hanoff. The goal is to get more people involved, not just voting, but paying attention to what's going on. I think having it in November, tying it in with other ones is a good idea and the best solution. I also agree with the onboarding. I mean, it's fine to be thrown into things, but I think if, if the new- It, I mean, it's fine to be thrown into things, but I think if, if the new commissioners are sworn in, in, it'd be December, is that correct? December, there's a little, probably a little less going on, easier to, to get acclimated, maybe ask questions, and you know, get, get ready for the storm that comes.
Fair enough. Thank you, Commissioner Conklin. Any other commissioners that want to add to the discussion?
I've got a quick question. So if it was tied to the, to the, the spring, the June, we would be doing, it would be at the, it would be at the county, county building and then it would be at the, at the city?
Absentee voting.
Absentee voting?
Would occur at the county.
Okay.
And so we would still have voting centers, I presume. We'd still have our voting centers at the fire station and city hall, but all the absentee. So that could create some confusion, you know, for folks that are regular absentee voters. And we have those people, some of whom are, you know, gone for the, for the winter and spring months, some of whom just prefer to vote absentee. It'd be confusing as to where, where they're going each year. There'll be some public education that has to occur, but.
Okay. But if we did the November?
It would always be.
We wouldn't have that confusion.
Correct.
Correct? Wouldn't, it wouldn't switch every other year, odd even, as far as where that absentee was taking place.
Correct.
To me, that, that, that is another, is it, is another check in the, in the November election per chart, whatever the heck you want to call it. I think that, I think that's a valuable one. So we don't have confusion, because the last thing we needed in elections is confusion.
Right. And, and our first year, regardless of the date selected, we could have some confusion because it's new. Just because you live in Yankton County doesn't mean you're in the same school district or we have some districts that are not, you know, people that are in our district that are not in our county. There'll be some confusion, but you know, Patty and, and her staff, and Lisa and her staff, they treat the election very sacredly. So once a decision is made in the, in the community, the wheels will start turning and making sure we get it right and accurate and making sure they go through the new training so people understand how ballots to be, would be distributed and, and things of that nature. Because, you know, a county resident wouldn't get the ballot that has the city commission folks on it. So, you know, there'll be some different ways of thinking with our election workers. But I don't know if, and you know any of our election workers, they're seasoned people. They've been around, they get training. We provide training, we might have to provide a little more training, but I mean, it's, it's, we're prepared to do that.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely have to do that because there will be, you, it'll depend on where you live, what ballot you get. And that's, yeah, when you, when you say that confusion, I, I can, I can understand because it's, it's confusing to me right now as far as all these different, the options of it, the fact that we're, that we've, that we're changing it.
Yeah. And the first year, we'll have to do some education also for the public and also for folks wanting to run because all those cycles are going to be differently. Process will be the same, but all the cycles and timelines will be different. So we'll just have to work it out.
Thank you.
One more thing, I think Ben hit on something really big there. You know, where my office is and the security cameras, I, I can see the commission chambers. When you have a city vote and absentee voting is at the city hall, you won't believe the number of people that automatically come to the government center. And so there's already confusion, that would eliminate that.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
I believe by having the November election, that it'd be more focused, you know, even though there's all kinds of races going on, that's when people tune in to what's going on in the community, not only community, but state and nationwide. And so I agree with Commissioner Hunoff that, you know, that's the biggest exposure and the biggest potential voting pool.
I would imagine that this is going to be a topic next week at the South Dakota First Class Mayor's meeting. And I'm just curious, I, I'm not saying I disagree with November by any means, but I do know in the packet it did say there are several cities that do them in June. So they don't really have to change unless they want to. And I'd just be curious, you know, if there's, if there's anything we're missing by not just making sure we give June a, a good consideration, that maybe any of them would share that are already doing it in June or, you know, just kind of what the discussion is around that. But I would imagine it's a little bit interesting to hear what you come back with next week on that too.
Sure, we can be specific and ask them. We've tried to ask some cities, of course, Perimillion, we know has always done June. I think Spearfish is doing November or leaning towards them. Tentatively, they haven't voted on that, but they're thinking about that. But we can ask that specifically and I can email out to you all what, what is known or what the tendency is, since we're all about in the same stage. But we don't want to wait too long either because we want to definitely start getting things in motion, even though it could be almost a year away, we, we still want to make sure we're getting ready and getting prepared.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, so we're not going to be giving any type of direction this evening for the next two meetings, we're going to give direction then at the next meeting, is that correct?
Well, we'll put the ordinance together and I think the ordinance will read the same whether it's, you select June or November. So I thought you would have a little discussion tonight and we'd hear a little bit from the public tonight and base our recommendation on that, which you, you all would have control over. But it is a ordinance change, so next meeting would just be an introduction. So you'll hear if you really, you know, if the, what we're recommending is completely off-base from the community, what the community's interested in. And then it would be then the first meeting in September that we would ask you to act.
Okay. Any more discussion? I know there's some seasoned attendees for our commission meetings from the public. Would the public like to throw anything into this discussion? Nothing? No? Okay. Okay. So again, what, what we're going to do then this evening is I'm, I'm hearing November, but we're going to wait till the next meeting then to actually give you direction, correct?
Well, we may now with, you know, having had the discussion, you may hear from the community, certainly filter that information to Lisa and I. We may hear things, I may hear things that people contact me, I'll direct them to you. But I wanted just to give an extra meeting so people were more than aware. And if you're approached and hear something and we may come up with something at the First Class Mayor's meeting, that changes where we're at. But right now, I'm hearing the interest is in November, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that great discussion, everybody. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on then to item number six under new business, which is an introduction of rezoning ordinance number 1098. Consideration of memorandum number 25-147, the introduction of ordinance number 1098, a rezoning from A1 agricultural to B2 highway business in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, the south 165 feet of the southeast one quarter, of the northwest one quarter, except the Yankton School Edition, section 8, T93N, R55 West of the 5th Primaridian, Yankton, South Dakota. Address north side of the 1,500 block of Whiting Drive, Yankton, South Dakota. Justice and Michelle Hirschman owners. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced.
Okay, introduced. All right, item number seven, bid award for the 8th Street Railroad Water Main Crossing improvements. Consideration of memorandum number 25-148, recommending that the city commission award the bid for the 8th Street Railroad Water Main Crossings to Firma Construction in the amount of $815,515. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anyone from the public? Okay, roll call.
Conklin?
Would you like an explanation?
Yeah.
Okay. So before we vote, we'll have Kyle come up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commission. Yes, we have several water mains at locations at Cedar, Walnut, and Douglas, where the railroad or the water main under the railroad tracks has failed. So all three of those locations, we actually have them shut off and isolated right now. Normally, we fix those water main breaks when they break. When it's underneath the railroad, we have to go through a permitting process and turn in a design that has to be approved. So we're with Banner Construction. Adam and his staff had a lot of work in on that. And now that we've got the permits in place, the project design, we have it bid out. Local contractor Firma Construction was the low bid, so.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Okay, any other questions for Kyle? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Thank you.
Conklin?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. And thank you, Commissioner Birch, for stopping me on that one. Okay, number eight, I will have, this is the bid award for 5th and Cedar Street Parking Lot Construction. Consideration of memorandum number 25-149, recommending that the city commission award the 5th and Cedar Street Parking Lot Construction Surrounding Sidewalk Insulation to Firma Construction, Inc. in the amount of $289,892.30. And I will have the city manager explain this just for a second, and I think this is a, a, a good thing.
Yes, this is the project that is in partnership with the UCC Church. Kitty corner, as you folks say in South Dakota, from city hall. You all know we have a parking opportunity in city hall. The opportunity would be to actually have places for people to park. Once pickleball took hold, we now at least have eight additional cars all the time at city hall. And certainly for folks who have mobility issues, it would be nice to have closer parking for those folks and for those of us who are able to be able to park somewhere else. Well, this opportunity came up, most of their parking needs at the church are on Sundays and Easter and Christmas, dates when we're not at city hall. And typically, the court services is also closed. And so we thought this was a good partnership. We're going to be taking care of the parking lot, meaning we'll do the mowing, we'll do the snow removal, we'll be taking care of the lot. If there is a conflict with, for example, a funeral or something of that nature, the church and city staff have a good communication and so that won't be disrupted. That really doesn't happen often, it can happen, but it's happening right now and everyone's able to manage. So we'll be sensitive to that. So we think for both the library and city hall and court services and the safety center that this is a really good opportunity for us to have an improvement and work together, Mayor, to provide an exemplary experience and space for us to park.
Thank you for that explanation. Okay, love partnerships. All right, commission, what is your pleasure?
Move to, move ahead on this project?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further commission discussion? Have you seen anyone? Is that concrete or asphalt parking lot?
It's going to be concrete, built to last. Go, keep going to church for a long time.
I do have one, one additional question. When this was presented earlier, there was some discussion about number of handicap parking spots, have we?
Yeah, I think we landed on that. I don't know if the number of spots, Adam, do you? You could go to the microphone if you want to. But I think they asked for more than maybe what was required because they have some folks in their congregation who need to use them.
Yeah, there was a, a minimum number of ADA spots in the, in the contract per se. We did, we ended up with more than that, or we will have more than what's in the contract. I can't remember what the exact number is right offhand, but I think it's around a dozen.
Thank you, Adam. Good commission, great question, Commissioner Birch. Okay. Again, any, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Get anyone from the public? Roll call.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conklin?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, item number nine, the bid award for the active transportation project. Consideration of memorandum number 25-150, recommending that the city commission award the active transportation project at 19th Street from Mulberry Street to Burley Street and Burley Street from 19th to 20th to, street to Firma Construction, Inc. in the amount of $270,370. And do I have a motion on this?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
I have a, a question.
Yes.
It doesn't say anything about sidewalks. Sidewalks, will we put in on that strip?
Yes, this is a sidewalk project.
Oh, it is sidewalk.
Yes, so this is, yeah, this is along with our active transportation plan.
On both sides, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, any other commission discussion? Okay, have you seen anyone from the public? Come up to the mic, sir. Please state your name.
Dennis O'Rourke. I just probably didn't hear you. They say both sides of the street?
Yes.
I thought, good, that's a fair way to do it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thanks for the question. Okay, any other further question? Oh, yes, Adam.
Should make one clarification on that. It's both sides of 19th Street and it'd be on the west side of Burley Street.
Okay, so both sides of 19th and the west side of Burley?
Yes, correct.
The east side already has a sidewalk, correct? Of Burley?
No, there's not. There's portions, I believe.
Okay, good. Okay, since we had, any other questions in from the public, since we added something? No, okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conklin?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, item 10, the wastewater treatment project update. Consideration of memorandum number 25-151, an update presented by the city staff on the wastewater treatment plan project. Again, no action will be taken, and I am very excited to hear the update, Kyle.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commission. Uh, yeah, just to give a little update, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I've got probably a few more slides and information here that we need, so I'll try to go through it pretty fast. I won't hit on everything. Again, this is the wastewater treatment plan, it's been a very unique, kind of complex a project, so I just listed, pretty much everybody in the city's been a part of this at some point as we went through it. Um, yeah, we look at this, again, like I said, very unique, a lot of firsts for this project. Started out with a really unique funding package with ARPA. Then when the construction manager got risked, our first C-MAR project the city's taken on. And then we went to aerated granular sludge, which is a fairly new treatment process. And we'll just talk about the construction updates. Um, project updates, you remember we did an EDA project that's been completed, that was unique in the fact that it was very, the, the, the way we could use the funding was very strict. It was really tied to anything that was, it had to show damage from the flooding, basically. So, and that was a tough project. Um, we have our ARPA funding secured, we got a design engineer selected, the C-MAR team selected and put together. And we got our AGS process and our project design completed, and we're now in the construction phase, and we'll give you some updates on that. Again, no action really done. EDA project, again, this was, we completed an equalization basin. We have utilized that a couple of times now. That allows us during high flows to divert up to a million gallons of water to a basin out on Paddlewell Point. And we improved the 42-inch gravity sewer coming into the facility, that's the picture on the left. And then the middle of the picture is, one of the issues we had during the, the flood was our power only ran from the source to each building. So if it was basically a, a single loop, so if you lost power in that anywhere, you'd lose power to all the buildings. So what we did is we did dual power feed to each building, that was considered critical. So that was part of that project. ARPA funding, if you remember, that was, again, unique. Notifications of funds came out September 1st. By October 1st, we had to have a list of projects put together and put on the state water plant. So that was a really short time, one month to really put that list together. From there, we had till January 1st, three months to put together the funding applications. That considers, that also includes basic engineering, environmental assessments and all of those things. So again, a really short timeframe to put that information together. We were notified of the award of our funds on April 13th, and we got a completion deadline with those ARPA funds for 2026. So again, a really tight deadline for putting this all together. Only important thing there is we were really trying to capitalize on, on the federal funds that are available, so all said and done, we're at about 18.6 million in grant funds. So that's really what it was all about, was trying to utilize and capitalize on those federal funds. Design engineer selection process, we did go through RFQ. We reviewed submittals from engineers and selected our, our engineer based on, on those scores from the RFQs. Biggest thing when you looked at it is when you look at a project, this complex, you do. you just have a lot of different engineering disciplines involved. And we really wanted somebody that had some C-MAR procurement procedures and documentation, had some experience with that. So that's why we selected HDR when we did this, the selection process. Again, the C-MAR, this is our first construction manager at risk project. It's a little bit different delivery method than the standard, design it, bid it out and build it. So you select your C-MAR contractor similar to how you select an engineer. It becomes a collaborative delivery method. There were several off-ramps throughout the process if we would have wanted to off-ramp and go through a conventional design bid build. Good sign is we did not do that. So that means the C-MAR process has gone good so far. Again, they were selected competitively through the same process, similar to what you do with an engineer. And again, that was all transparent and meant all of our federal regulations for our funding. Again, we're still the owner, there's still a project, still an engineer, still a contractor, just a little bit different way of doing it. Again, it's a tool, it's not a fix. It doesn't make the project any cheaper, it doesn't. There's nothing magical about it, it's just a kind of a different way of doing business. When you're doing something like this where you have a retrofit, having that collaborative team and having that contractor involved from day one, we thought was critical. When we look at equipment lead times, the ability to procure equipment early, we thought was important. Add that to the scheduling deadlines and the sequencing that was going to be required. Again, it's a retrofit, we have to keep the facility running and operating while we do all of this. And the other issue was with all the ARPA funds, contractor availability was going to be a concern. So we wanted to get a contractor onboard early in the process and C-MAR allowed us to do that. And it also allows us to manage costs, different than it does with that hard bid. So hopefully we can do a little better job of staying on budget, managing our costs as that, as inflation affects how things move forward. With that said, we may have to cut portions out of the project to stay on budget, which may require future projects a little sooner than what we would like. We're early in the process, yet to know where we're at with those funds. I think the biggest advantage again is getting that constructor input early in the design phase. The other one that has really stuck out to me is that the owner remains involved in design. It really forces us to be more involved. In the past, you handed it off to an engineer, they designed it, they called, they asked questions, you answered them, you got done, there was a design. Now you have that contractor input that adds a whole nother layer of questions and having that communication with them, having those sit downs with the contractor and an engineer has really kept us more involved in the design. So that's been a really positive part of the C-MAR process. Again, scheduling, collaborative prompts, innovation, we've seen that. We've came up with some really unique ways to address things. Everything is still competitively bid out, but rather than the city bid it out, we have a guaranteed maximum price contract with the C-MAR. Then the C-MAR bids out the packages individually, competitively bid out. So it's a little bit different that way, but we actually gain more transparency with the contractor because we see all of their costs, all of their markups and we know that ahead of time, so. Again, C-MAR selection process, normally it's an RFQ, RFP. We actually did those together because we knew we didn't have an opportunity to shortlist. We knew our list was going to be short to start with, just with the availability of contractors that were out there. Established some criteria for our project's need and then scored those RFPs based on our project needs. And again, that's how we selected that C-MAR team. We ended up selecting John T. Jones for our construction manager at risk. If you remember, they were the general contractor on the water plant. So we have a good relationship with John T. Jones. As we got into the design process, we have a unique situation here in Yankton where our aeration basins are fairly deep that other communities don't have. And you need deep aeration basins if you want to retrofit aerobic granular sludge. It's a new, newer process. It's been around in the Netherlands for quite some time. It's new technology for here in the United States. It's Aqua Naritas who actually licenses it here in the south, in the United States. We're looking, when we originally looked like this, we were probably going to be about the fifth AGS system in the United States. So again, new to the United States, but it's been around for a long time in the Netherlands. Why AGS? It streams on your treatment process. It increases your biomass. You can actually, as you have heavy loadings versus low loadings, gives you a much more robust treatment process. And it meets our future needs for nutrient removal today. So hopefully that prevents a future project to meet those needs. So we do it a little bit smaller footprint this way. And it's partly because when you create a granular flock, you can get an anaerobic biological process happening in an aerated tank because the center of that granular stays anaerobic. To do that and get your nitrogen and phosphorus removal in conventional aeration, you have to have anoxic and anaerobic zones. So it becomes more complex and extra tanks. Developing a granular, you can do it in one tank. Why have we not done this in the past? It's because we didn't have the technology and the process control to develop those feed, aeration and settling stages. With today's technology and our programmable logics, we can take DO readings, we can take nitrogen readings, it can all go back to a computer and it can change that feed time versus for low feed, when you have low flows, low loadings, it'll reduce the feed time. So that's always changing. We didn't have that technology in the past. That's what's new to the technology. So that's what allows us to do AGS. Again, we'll have three tanks, each tank will be doing a feed. In the feed discharge, you're bringing in raw sewage to the bottom of the tank, through the bottom of the granulars, clean water's going out the top. This creates a really high food to mass ratio that we didn't create in a conventional aerobic process. Again, as you go into the aeration phase, again, you're getting simultaneous nitrification, denitrification and enhanced biological phosphorus removal. Again, it's because you have that granular that even though you're aerating the tank, you still have an anaerobic process going on inside the granular that we didn't have before. And then the final phase, the settling phase, and because it settles really fast, it allows you to actually let the granular settle to the bottom and waste the lighter flock off the middle, off the center. Conventional treatment, because it takes so long to settle, you almost have to settle out your heavily, heavy solids. So you're actually wasting away your best biomass. This allows us to actually let that heavier biomass settle and waste out the lighter stuff. See if that'll play. We're not going to worry about that. It's a, it's just a little video and it's from the company, so it's kind of a sales pitch. But it doesn't, basically what it explains is how that granular allows for that anaerobic in anoxic zone in the center of the granular. Again, it's a layered microbial community, it's not a perfect round structure. It's a very complex structure with grooves in it and things like that. Like I said, if you see the picture, it settles very rapidly. The original conventional aeration sludge settles very slow. How do we form those granulars? Again, because we can change those feed rates and settling times, it allows us to, one, do a hydraulic selection. In the past, we couldn't do that. Now we can waste away that lighter flock, keep the heavier granules. And then the other side is the biological side. We could select for phosphated cumuline organisms and we do that by creating a much higher food to mass ratio than what we had in the past. In the past, we had primary clarifiers in front of that. We'll now remove those primary clarifiers so that we actually get a heavier loading strictly, directly to our aeration basin to increase that food to mass ratio. And we see mass, it's food to the mass of bugs that are consuming the, consuming the solids, the dissolved solids. So where we're at today, in these pictures, the picture to the left, if you see on the left side of the picture, that's our existing aeration basins. The second picture, you can see, first picture, they're getting it formed up. Picture to the right is basically where we're at today, the amount of concrete we've got poured in those tanks. So we have a new AGS tank and then we also have a couple of water leveling tanks. The column down the center is where we'll be doing the process piping for the AGS system. The one thing that has came up with this is the AGS equipment that goes in the tanks is not going to arrive till late fall. We were hoping to be able to start installing that today and we haven't got that yet. If we have a good winter and we can continue with outdoor construction on winter, it won't be an issue with our schedule. If we have a real harsh winter, cold winter, a lot of snow, that may slow us down, affect the schedule a little bit. So that one's a little bit out there yet on where we're going to end up on that. The other part of the project was a big part was our inlet works improvements. As you can see, this is about a 22-foot deep hole. The picture to the left, they're actually lowering a mini excavator into the hole with a crane. Again, tight, tight quarters to get these structures built. As you can see, there's shoring on the side along the buildings, along the inlet and order control building. So it just makes it difficult to get these projects done in such tight quarters. Really sandy soils, so you got to do a lot of shoring to hold those soils. So this is one of those areas on our risk registry that we knew we could potentially have some issues. We did have to do a little bit of dewatering, but not bad. So so far, this portion of the project has gone fairly well. Digestor lid rehab, this was probably one of our biggest issues on the risk registry. This is actually lifting the floating covers off our digesters. This is where we actually trap the methane gas that we get, that the biological produces off our waste sludge. We collect that methane gas, use it to burn the boilers and actually heat the sludge. When you do this, if you wait too long and you get too much rust on your lid, you start to lose integrity in the steel and you have the potential, so when you go to lift it off, it could potentially fold up on itself. So it's kind of a timing. You want to get as much time out as you can before you recoat them, but you don't want to wait too long where you go to lift them up and they fail. So far, we've done two of the three lids. We did do the big secondary digester lid, which is extremely heavy. That's the one that develops and establishes the gas pressure. So it's not just a floating steel lid, it's a floating steel lid packed with concrete to put enough weight on the gas to actually build up enough pressure in the gas to burn in a boiler. So that went very well. Had to do very little steel work, it was basically sandblasted, repaint it. That large crane to be on site was about $35,000 a week. So once it was on site, it was get the lid down, get it sandblasted, painted, a little bit of steelwork and back on as quickly as we could. We actually did have a very nice week of weather. We didn't have any rain delays on it, the moisture, humidity wasn't too bad. So they worked through the weekend, got it sandblasted and got it painted and got it back on fairly quickly. So we do have one lid left to remove yet, but based on the condition of the other two, we feel pretty confident we won't have any issues with that. So that's, like I said, on our risk registry, that was one of our, probably our biggest one. Work completed, we've done about 1,840 cubic yards of concrete. Again, that was mostly on the inlet building and the AGS structures. 247 tons of rebar have been installed, 3,000 cubic yards of excavation. That larger digester lid weighed 187,000 pounds, so fairly heavy. And when you look at the diameter being 90 feet in diameter, you have a lot of reach on your crane, which increases the size of the crane that you need. Grid excavation was 22-foot deep, so that was again, a big hole. Currently, budget wise, we're doing well, but I say that with a lot of caution. There's still a lot of project left, so. Going forward, we do have the final digester cover, pick and recoat. Don't see any problems with that. Installation of AGS equipment, like I said, the timing of that's going to be critical and how the weather plays out this winter. We have a lot of site process piping. So piping back from that existed, from that new AGS back to our existing aeration building, we have to excavate down about 25-foot deep along the whole side of the aeration building. And we have several pipes that go in and out of that building that we have to maintain operations. So anytime you have a pipe full of liquid hanging out in the air, it's difficult to maintain its structurability. So still some concerns with that one, getting through that. And then we still have the new UV disinfection system installed, which is a retrofit into our existing tank. So that's kind of where we're at today. Questions, concerns? Again, like I said, I'm cautiously, cautiously optimistic that budget so far and everything is going good. I'm happy with the C-MAR process. It's a different way of doing business. It's not going to be the best for everything, but it's definitely, for a retrofit, it's a better way of doing a project, for sure.
Kyle, I have a question, two questions, actually. The first one is if lifting the digester lid was the most expensive and risky and portion of the project, why was I on the roof the day that that happened?
And I wasn't?
But you can answer that tomorrow, you know, when we talk one-on-one. The real question, the serious question I have is if you have any idea of timeline in terms of when you think, I know, I know you don't know for sure, but just approximate completion date?
So the completion date will be 2027, but we will have a majority of the project done in the summer, following, the end of the summer of 2026. So on paper, we're probably over halfway. In terms of installation, we're probably not quite halfway yet, so.
Okay, other questions?
I've got a quick thing. First, first things first, I want to say thank you for the work that you've done and thank you for being as proactive. We've been really proactive on this project instead of reactive. We were proactive, we saw the opportunity. We, you guys, you know, you had ducks in a row. I remember going through this process and it was a stressful process to go through and what was the right decisions to be doing? And I think we made the right decisions. I appreciate all of the work that you've done because I know that you've been the spearhead on this and it's been a, this is going to be a huge thing for the community. It's a necessity that we have to have and it's going to set our community up for future success. So I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
On that. One thing that I did want to ask you about was if you could talk a little bit about redundancies? Because I think that was one of the things where we were a little short on before. If you could just talk to that a little bit?
So, yeah, so some of that was addressed during the EDA project with some of the dual power and things like that. When we looked at the inlet building, that's what drove that project was some capacity and redundancy issues with the inlet building. Equalization was a million gallons that we can bypass out to our lagoon and bring it back when we have flood events and things like that. So everything you do in wastewater because you can't shut it off is to make sure you have redundancy and capacity in that redundancy. So if one fails and you have to run on the second one, that it has the capacity meets your flow. So that, that's what was one of the main things we addressed in the project.
Yeah, and again, that's being proactive. We're building in redundancies so that if we have an event, if we have a problem, we have, you know, a different path because it doesn't turn off, as we all know.
Right.
And I just, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I will add that we had a lot of involvement from almost every department in this project. Ross was heavily devolved to C-MAR, Lisa, Adam, so it wasn't, wasn't just me by any means, so.
I would also add that this is the value of the strategic planning. So looking back to, some of you were on the commission, this probably went Sarda's, before his sabbatical and his first term, Charlie, you know, and others, many others. We talked about the water plant and this project and the need for it and planned for that in 15, 16, 17, you know, going forward, knowing that we needed to start focusing resources, focusing, you know, planning efforts on this. And so in this regard, you know, COVID was an opportunity and as opposed to spending it all on, you know, touchless water fountains and whatever other things some cities decided to do, we said, no, you know, our state's given us this opportunity to couple our funding and double it towards a project for infrastructure. That's what was chosen to do. And so some people don't always understand why we do strategic planning, but it keeps us all, even though commissions may change or staff may change, it keeps us all focused on the big things that we decided as a community are necessary to do. And so that's why we make those efforts. And I really applaud the community of Yankton because I think most of the big things that the city's been able to accomplish have come, have been born out of maybe some history, but also then strategically planning to get them accomplished. So this is just another example. Tanner would love to show you and walk you through the process. Some of this is way over some of the things I understand, but once you're at the plant and you go through the process step by step, it's really fascinating. It's like a science lab and you feel like you've gone through a nice course. lab, um, and you feel like you've gone through a nice course in biology once you're there. So I welcome folks to do that as well, if they're interested.
Uh, one point of clarification, if anybody was paying very close attention to the timeframes, I, I'm sure you can confirm this, Kyle, the, uh, the deadline to use the ARPA grant funds was twenty twenty-six. The AGS stuff potentially would cause delay, but my understanding from our prior conversations for the benefit of the public, all of that ARPA funding will be spent on eligible, um, applications or expenses along the way within the twenty twenty-six deadline.
Correct. Um, the state was fortunate, very fortunate, we're very fortunate the state was willing to work with, work with us on that. All of our ARPA funds are going to the wastewater project, the wastewater treatment plant project, and we are allowed to front-load the contract and spend our ARPA funds first. So everything we've done up to this point, we've been using the ARPA funds. So yes, we should, we should have no issue with spending ARPA funds by twenty twenty-six with this project. So even with, even if, if we have delays, we'll still be fine.
Great. Any more questions or comments? Uh, I do have a couple, Kyle. Uh, one, I want to echo Commissioner Brunick's thank you. Uh, I do know that, I realize that it does take a lot of different departments and a lot of different minds on, on this to make this work, and I just want to thank you for being as sharp as you are, for being the tip of the spear, so to speak, to get this project done.
I think they should get credit for spending, too.
Yeah. Fair enough. Um, but, but I do want to say, I, I hope all the commissioners have had a chance to go out there and tour the wastewater treatment plant. Again, I, I said this on the media briefing, I thought it was completely just so super interesting, the science behind it is amazing, as you, as everyone heard either in, in the meeting here or online. Uh, I did have a question, so, um, and I, maybe I'm way off base here, but when you do have the, uh, the solids separating as, as awesome as they are in that one slide where you got the sludge at the bottom and the, and the clean water at the top, those, those solids is, uh, those, I mean, is that fertilizer? Is that technically what it could be?
So, yes. Um, what we do with our bio solids, when, so, if you get too many bugs, your, your food to mass ratio gets up, so you waste some of those bio solids away. They, what we call them are bio solids, they go out to our sludge handling lagoons, and then every fall, their land applies, applied as a fertilizer. So we go out, we test the soil, we determine the agronomic rate, and they apply that bio solids based on the agronomic rate for nitrogen and phosphorus. So yes, it is basically a fertilizer at that point.
Awesome, thank you.
And we're going to increase the value of it by adding more nitrogen for phosphorus to it.
Fantastic. Uh, my next question was, I know when I did the tour, there was some movement out there, and you talked about the, the difficulty with the sandy soils, try having to shore that up and work in those tight confines. Any, has, have that type of movement kind of been mitigated, or at least tried to have been?
Yeah, and that, that's one of the areas where I think the C Mar process has been really beneficial. Uh, we did find some movement under our existing aeration basins, um, between the engineers, contractor, um, reaching out the subcontractors, uh, we did find a product, product that we injected under the, the existing structure to get the compaction rate that structural engineers required. And that really came from working with our C Mar contractor to find a unique and new way of, of addressing that issue, so.
Okay, great. And then lastly, um, sorry I'm taking so much of your time here, but, uh, I'm just really, really happy and excited, I'm going to knock on the table here, that we have no surprises. Knowing enough about construction to be dangerous, I do realize that anytime you do a retrofit, especially while you're still using the, the plant, uh, there tends to be surprises, and I'm really happy that, um, so far, again, knock on wood, that we are doing.
Cautiously.
Cautiously optimistic, I love, very much so. Okay, all right, again, any other commission questions, um, and while we have, anybody from the public want to give any input? No? Okay, thank you, Kyle, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, well, that, uh, that finishes up our new business. Um, next, we have future business, so this is a time for the city commissioners to address, address the commission regarding matters, not on the agenda. Again, we won't take any action on this, um, but we could potentially put it on, on another agenda, the next agenda, if, if, uh, so needed.
I asked, uh, City Manager Leon to put on the agenda for the twenty-fifth of discussion, particularly about three intersections near Middle School and Stewart to discuss safety, um, a few ideas maybe to make those intersections just a little more safe. You know, there's a, about a hour and a half, two hours in the morning, and the same after school where the traffic is nuts. And I think there are some opportunities, maybe we can do a couple of things to maybe make it a little safer for the kids.
Okay, so, fair enough. Now, I do know, and I, I don't, I don't disagree at all, um, I do know there was, um, I think there might have been some discussion about maybe getting a, um, some studies back or some type of information, am I?
Yeah, um, and some of the suggestions I, I shared would need to have studies done. I know there's regulations that go into certain things. There's a couple of things that maybe don't need to have studies done, that I'd like to throw out there as a possibility, so, and see what other people have to say on the commission if they have any ideas.
Okay. Do we have a second then to?
I second that.
Okay, so Commissioner Hanoff?
I discuss these things.
I second that.
Okay.
I think just, you, you mentioned just the Stewart and that area, but do we just bring all the schools in, right? Because I know a couple of years ago, there was some discussion down on Sixth Street near, uh, Sacred Arts School, maybe, I can't remember, but, all, there's a lot more than just that one area.
Right, those just happened to come up, um, because we're redoing Douglas, and that kind of kickstarted my mind. I know that, um, a couple of other people have mentioned other ones, too, but I thought that would be a good start, and if you have other ones, bring them to the table and let's discuss all of them.
Okay, so again, a reminder, that'll be, we'll put that on the next agenda, that'll be a discussion. Uh, I do ask you to, to do your due diligence and bring some, uh, notes with us for that time, so we can have a good, healthy discussion. But again, as I said, too, is that we may not be able to without some information or some, um, data on some of those intersections, may, we may not be able to have as robust of a discussion as maybe we could later, so just want to add that. Okay, all right, uh, now we will, we do have to adjourn and do the executive session, discuss contractual and personal matters under S D C L one twenty-five dash two. Uh, do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, we'll move into executive session.
Just for the ladies.
Yes, you bet.